Five thirty, and I will ask Ms. Bellinger to open us with a prayer, please.
Dear Lord, a wise woman warned about making assumptions, particularly assumptions not grounded in truth and love. Instead, Lord, please give us open minds and open hearts so that we can hear the voices of every single person, that we can bring all voices to this table, so that we can be open to creative solutions. Please give us wisdom. Thank you so much for all you have given us. We are truly grateful. We also ask you to heal all those in our community who are suffering in any way, and to bless this community with truth, love, and peace. And we ask all of these things in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Okay, I will call this meeting to order if you'll rise with me for a pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for being with us tonight. First thing on the agenda is the open forum. And the city secretary tells me we have no one signed up to speak during that during that time. That is, to speak about things that are not on the agenda for tonight. So we will move on to number four. Counsel, are there any items that you would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to remove item B.
Item B?
Just informational for me.
Okay, alright. Anything else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item B?
So move.
Move by Ms. Bellinger.
Second.
Second, Mr. Anderson. Any more discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, so we will move to five B. Consider an interlocal cooperation contract between Texas State University and the City of Nacogdoches to conduct controlled by stings of tobacco. Assistant Chief of Police, Terravella.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I'm Dan Terravella, the Assistant Chief at the Nacogdoches Police Department. Do you just want a presentation on this or information on the?
Mr. Rowland, would you?
Yeah, I mean, I have just a couple of questions.
You just want to have questions, or you want to give us some?
Yeah, it's up to you.
I'm good with you just asking questions if you would.
Okay, just a couple of questions, okay. Thank you, Chief. Just to catch me up on the process, first of all, is this something that state mandated, or is this something that the City of Nacogdoches decided to do?
It is not mandated. It is a, actually, the Texas State University who manages this grant for this comptroller's office reaches out to law enforcement agencies, and we are just one of them to ask to participate. It's not mandated by any means, and we've done it for several years.
Is that, we don't do that every year, though, do we? I mean, I-
Well, we've done it off and on for many years. It's a, it's a rolling grant that allows us to do tobacco enforcement operations at retail locations.
Now, as much research as I could find on it, we actually have to use teenagers. Let's take that back. Have to use, that's fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen years of age. Where do we find the teenagers that to be part of this sting?
So some of them are just acquaintances or family of officers. They have to lie within that, they have to fall within that age group. And it's very strict on the age, so that you can't use a, a very older-looking eighteen- or nineteen-year-old. So, but it's various. It's acquaintances, or just people known in the community whose teenager wants to do that.
Oh, well, in that respect, can't use an older person. But you do have, you can't use a fake ID in these type of stings, right?
No, and they're very strict on, if they're asked for an ID, they have to present it. And so those, those youth go into the store with an officer, an undercover officer. And it's just to check the compliance of the retailer, to make sure they're checking an ID, or, and not just selling tobacco products carte blanche.
Okay, and I failed to write down, it was like a hundred and twenty-five dollars for each sting operation?
That's correct. And they, they pay the department to do these operations, and they're allotted so many per year, and then that money can be spent on any law enforcement-related things we need at the department.
Okay, yeah, that's like seventy-five stings.
Yes, sir.
Does it have to be completed in a certain timeframe?
They, they do them quarterly, and I, and I honestly don't know if they require, because I'm not over the operation directly, but I don't know if they require a certain amount each quarter, or if they just get them all done throughout the year.
And I guess really the main question I wanted to ask is, are there any conclusive evidence that the sting operation actually either slow down or prevent youth from purchasing cigarette products?
So the data is, all of our results are forwarded to the, to Texas State University, who compiles all that data. These officers do see a reluctance. They, they find very little retailers out of compliance, if that makes sense. They're, they're used to, most of the retailers, just like in the alcohol business and the bar business, they, they sometimes can sense when somebody is either underage, and most of them are very compliant. They ask for ID. And, but I don't know the yearly data on the compliance statewide.
When I first looked at it, one of the issues that I had was having fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-olds going into a business, and, you know, they are not law enforcement.
Right.
And that was one of the issues I had with it. Now they are learning how to, maybe, when they want to get cigarettes, they know how to bypass the step. I, I just, I just really have a problem recruiting fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen-year-olds being part of a sting operation. So is there another alternative? I know that what they call like a reverse, that's where the police officer is, is inside the store, and actually, the purchase would be made from him. But that's taking the child into, say, maybe custody, et cetera. That's not doing anything to the owner that does it when a young teenager come in.
Yeah, this is strictly for, for the compliance of the retailer, that they are not selling to minors. It's, it's not citing the minor, because the minor is working in conjunction with us. So it's just to ensure compliance on both the sale and also their signage and their advertising, because there's a lot of laws that apply to what kind of signage they need in their store, and things like that.
Yeah, evidently, there is, the punishment for a seller, vendor, store owner, is not that great that, you know, they're going to go back to selling to the youth. And we're not sure the sting operation is hip and whatsoever.
Well, most of them are very, well, first of all, most of them are very in compliance. The ones that, that do make a sale, they immediately know, and they're, normally they're fired, first of all. So it's not like, most of them do, just do it out of, just being lackadaisical, not intentionally trying to supply youth with tobacco.
Yeah, just one last quick question. The fee, the hundred and twenty-five dollars? Does any of the youth get part of that?
The youth do. They, they are paid for their time, each time.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions?
Mayor, may I add, you know, state law did change here not too many sessions ago that they can't sell to minors under twenty-one. So, so, I mean, I know Mr. Bolden was mentioning about fifteen, sixteen-year-olds, but it's also, I think, if I'm correct, is that correct, that it's twenty-one and older is to sell tobacco?
Yes.
But, but we don't, but we don't use minors that are eighteen, nineteen, or-
Correct.
Eighteen, nineteen, twenty, because it's too close?
Yes.
We want it to be obvious that they're too young?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure, you bet. Okay, anybody else? Do I have a motion to approve five B?
I make a motion to approve five B as it's written.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden.
Second.
Second, Mr. Anderson. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move into the regular agenda. Number six, six A. Consider purchase of five new police vehicles. Assistant Chief of Police, Terravella.
I didn't know what order we were in. Good evening again. So, this should be on your screen. Okay. The police department normally buy, and I'm, I'm new in this position on the purchase of these cars. I've learned a lot. We normally, in the past, have bought roughly six vehicles every year. They replace older cars that are out of service, high mileage. And this year, we're only able to buy five, because we have a set budget, and the cars have gone up this year. Just normal inflation, and also the car crisis that we're all aware of. So what we're looking at buying, our normal marked patrol cars are Chevy Tahos. They've been a very reliable vehicle for us, full-size SUV. And we normally will buy a certain number of marked police Tahos, and then a few what we call our admin cars, like a plain black Tahoe for either the chiefs, or the detectives, or those, those folks need their vehicles too, but they don't need to be completely marked. So, this year, we are trying to diversify a little bit, because we learned during the ice storm that we were at a little bit of a disadvantage, and literally could not go on many of our calls, because we didn't have four-wheel drive. So this isn't just a cool way to get four-wheel-drive vehicles. We really see a need for it. So we'd like to incorporate a couple four-wheel-drive vehicles in this year's purchase. Those would be our, we normally would be a plain black Tahoe. We would go with a four-wheel-drive Ford pickup truck. Those would be our admin vehicles, our plain unmarked vehicles. In the event that we have another situation that we need four-wheel drive, these cars would then be pressed into service in whatever capacity that they need to be. One of these four trucks is going to be for our lake patrol officer, and it will be a marked vehicle for the lake. That's the new lake position you guys are probably aware of and discussed in a previous meeting. He's going to be pulling a boat and going out to the lake regularly, and it's going to be a fully marked car. And then the other one will be an unmarked F-150. That's the, the cost there on the, on the slide for all five. This is what, once, once the cars are purchased, this is what they look, this is what they go through when they get outfitted with all of our equipment. They totally strip a vehicle down to the floor. It's not for your average shade tree mechanic to put all this equipment inside. It's pretty complex, and I wouldn't even know where to begin. So that's where, that's what are the vehicles, the process they go through to get outfitted with all of our equipment once they're bought. And every now and then, that happens, and we have to replace a vehicle. That was an officer working in an accident on the loop in some bad weather several months ago, and was rear-ended by a drunk driver at about sixty miles an hour. So when that happens, we're kind of without a vehicle. We're down a vehicle. Sometimes we have enough vehicles to, to still get by, but then we have to kind of change our plan the next purchase year, and see what we need to buy. And then the end product is that. So that's what, that's the new Chevy body style Tahoe. And that's our, that's one of our K-9 vehicles, but it's very identical, other than the, a few of the markings on it, and the inside has a K-9 cage for the, for the K-9 inside. But other than that, it's, it's, that's what you will see on the street. So there you go. I don't know if you have any questions or not.
I think we'll move to a public comment now, if that's okay.
Sure.
All right. Do we have any public comment? And if you'll stay close there.
Thank you for your time, and I appreciate you listening to what I have to say. In an effort to keep my comments brief, I've written them down, so I'm just going to read them to you, and it won't take long.
Introduce yourself, please.
I'm going to do that.
Oh, that's good.
My name is Neil Slaton. I live outside the city of 580 County Road 2471 in Nacogdoches. I'm the owner of Tipton Ford Lincoln here in Nacogdoches, and the owner of some rental property here in town. In addition, Tipton Ford employs sixty-two people as of this morning, and we have an annual payroll of between three point five and four million dollars. Of the sixty-two men and women who work at Tipton Ford, seventy-two percent live in the Nacogdoches County area. In 2020, we paid more than eighty-five thousand dollars to the Central Appraisal District, of which almost twenty thousand dollars was paid to the City of Nacogdoches. This does not include the VIT tax assessed on each one of the vehicles that we sell, or the tax paid on roughly two point five million dollars of furniture fixtures and parts inventory. And I do anticipate paying more taxes in 2021. And my comments today, however, are not about taxes. I'm here today to ask the City Council of Nacogdoches to shop NAC first. As citizens and business owners, we're encouraged by the Chamber of Commerce, Nedco, CVB, Main Street, past and present city councils, to shop NAC first. When shopping local is encouraged by these different organizations in Nacogdoches, it is done with good intentions and with a practical understanding that you can't find everything in Nacogdoches. The good behavior that Shop NAC First encourages should be, in my opinion, modeled by our city and county governments and school systems. Not just because your actions might encourage others to do the same, but primarily because most of the money local government has to spend has come out of the pockets of the people who live and work and die in this community. We constantly hear about the power of dollars coming into our community, and how many times these dollars turn over and are exchanged for goods and services before that dollar leaves our community. Every dollar spent by city government in the city that funds that government is a powerful investment in our collective futures. This is not the first time that I've spoken to city council members and local officials about this topic in the last twenty-plus years, but you have the power to make it the last time I talk about it. And here's where I'd like to offer my suggestion. Many city governments in the state have adopted ordinances stating that, quote, "Desire to use a city's spending power to promote fiscal responsibility and maximize the amount of citizen tax dollars that remain in the local economy for the benefits of its citizens," end of quote. That language comes straight from an ordinance adopted by a Texas city in 2013. The ordinance does not guarantee that everything will be purchased locally. Still, by the way of policy, it ensures that city departments seek local bids before shipping local dollars out to enrich other communities. Texas Local Government Code, Section 271.905, gives direction for the bid process, and it allows for local governments to choose to invest in their communities, while ensuring that taxpayers are getting the best bang for their buck. Now, about these F-150s, the police vehicles that were presented today for your approval, you should buy them. And you shouldn't buy them from me. You should buy them from this other dealer. And if you want to know why, I'll tell you why. They're a reasonable price, not a lower price than we could have bid at that time that that bid was out, and certainly not a zero profit for the dealership that bid those vehicles, but a good price nonetheless. We need our police department focused on keeping us safe, not retracing their steps by asking them to rebid two F-150s. In closing, like I used to say in my radio ads, "I want to be your car dealer." Okay? Or better said today, "Give me a shot at being your car dealer." And give all the other businesses in Nacogdoches a shot at having the City of Nacogdoches as one of their precious customers by making it a requirement for NAC to shop NAC first. In order for Nacogdoches to be first in the mind of tourists, or businesses, or work-at-homers, and I know we've had some of those move here lately, we first have to have Nacogdoches thinking of Nacogdoches first. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any, any questions for Ms. Bellinger?
Okay, while we're on the subject, was, were our local car dealers given the opportunity to bid on this particular purchase?
We have traditionally gone through what's called a state contract, which is a, a, kind of like a cooperative, where the, the dealerships are, have the, all dealerships have the opportunity to get on these state contracts and be one of the lowest bidders. We've gone through that, through those state contract participants for years. This particular purchase was done over the last few months, and I was not aware the local dealerships wanted to participate until very recently. I did contact all of them, Mr. Slaton included, and we've had very good conversations and very, very positive about trying to do this in the future. The time crunch was of the essence for this particular purchase, because we, we had to get it on the agenda. We had to do all this in October when the new budget, and the cars are scarce. So, but all the dealerships were very appreciative of us reaching out and, and want to participate in the future, especially Mr. Slaton. So I'm very open to that principle and that philosophy of shop home. I believe in it personally. But right now, these cars are for the price and, and the availability, in my opinion, what we need to go with. Did that, I don't know if that answered your question. Sorry.
It did. And I'm just a little concerned that, that's been twenty years. I've seen in other communities that, particularly rural communities that I've been in and I've done work in, that there can be a mindset by government that things outside of the, of the city, things in urban areas are cheaper, better, smarter. And that was one of the biggest concerns. It's not just about cars.
Right.
It's about everything, that many, many businesses said they were very concerned about this. And I know we've seen that, we've seen several things purchased outside of our city, even, even small things, but everything does seem to, everything adds up, as we know.
Absolutely does. And, Mr. Slaton and I had a wonderful conversation last week about this, and, and if we can do that, I'm all for it. I don't know the history of when we started buying on state contract, and when we, what years we used to purchase locally. I don't know that, that history, but I know for the last several years, we've bought off a state contract just simply because of the ease, the turnkey operation, just turnkey operation. And, but I'm perfectly willing to explore other options.
I have great faith in you.
Thank you.
But, but, but I think the ordinance, as I understand it, I actually explored this before this issue came up, just because I was asked to several times. And there are a variety of different ordinances. I'm just wondering, what is, how do we go about trying to? I'm asking my fellow wiser city council members, how do we go about getting an ordinance that helps us and protects us? So, for example, I know there were some, there are some ordinances that we don't have to go with the lower, lowest bid. Some of them have five to fifteen percent, and it protects us legally in the procurement process. How do we go about getting this ordinance?
Do one of you professionals want to address that?
I can at least chime in on, on the operations of it. We have hired our first procurement coordinator in seven years. He started two weeks ago. It's been a position that we've been advertising since I started. We finally hired an individual.
Hello, it's, did you just wave your, I thought somebody waved their hand back there. Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Sorry.
So anyway, so we, for the last, certainly before I started, purchasing has been decentralized to the departments. And so it's very unusual for a city of our size to not have a centralized purchasing function. So it's been the responsibility of the departments to handle their own procurement. That's going to be changing. And so part of that is, is going through, looking at what are some best practices? What are some ordinances that can be put in place to help with this effort? But just like Chief Terravella was saying, the department has been for years going through state contracts, because it's the easiest thing to do. It's the path of least resistance. When you have no centralized purchasing person, that's what departments are going to do. And so, not saying that they still won't be involved, because they're the ones that are going to spec the vehicles and understand what the needs are, but to have a centralized procurement function really assisting the administration of these types of issues and efforts. Going back to the local, shop local, one of the things I did do, and I know Ray Mitchum's here with Tipton Ford, I had Kerry Walker, our, our Public Works Superintendent, reach out to him and go through the list of equipment that we have slated for this next budget year. And again, I don't want to speak for Mr. Mitchum, because I didn't speak to him directly, but it's my understanding that they were able to kind of walk through that list and understand what our needs are, and be able to convey what they can provide. And so I believe they've, they've engaged in a coop, in a cooperative purchasing arrangement. So we absolutely believe in shopping local when there is a local option.
I, I, I'm going to add one, one of the quotes was, "to counter concentrated corporate power." And again, in my visits to rural areas, there is a myth sometimes, because of the concentrated corporate power that, that is in these purchasing agreements with the state, that they are cheaper when often they aren't. And so I found that people had to actually get their nonprofits to go buy the materials they needed and to subvert the whole process. I found that very interesting, and anyways, I know we want to strengthen our local economy, so that's, just wanted to, in all of this, in all of these areas. So what is our next step? Will the procurement officer then work with Mr. Kirkland? He's, he's smiling there. He's ready.
Yes, Councilmember Mayor, we can certainly look at and incorporate a bi-local ordinance in a procurement policy. We can do it as a policy. We could do it as an ordinance. And we will vet it with all the appropriate procurement laws from the state, which means it may take us a little while, but we can certainly have that up for review sometime in the near future.
Okay, anything else? Okay, Mr. Bolden?
Thank you, Mayor. In the last, well, since 2011, I've purchased four vehicles for family. Well, for me. And I'm going to say this, I, price-wise, I was able to, you know, negotiate a more, lower price in a large metro area. Now, I still went and bought those vehicles at a local dealership, mainly because I wanted to establish a relationship with that dealership. I, I didn't want to, if I purchased a year ago the Dallas just for, you know, maintenance or whatever. So I think the price that I paid might have been slightly higher, but it was well worth the price, only besides the revenue that came to Nacogdoches, but also the relationship I established with the dealership. And, you know, I'll continue to purchase vehicles locally, locally. But it's, you know, I'm burning, raising Nacogdoches. There is a lot of things I could go out of town and purchase for a better price, but I don't, and I won't.
I will say that, if I can address that, I will say that the purchase of the cars is just half, half the process. The other half is these photos you saw of the car being outfitted, which is, and I'm not saying that can't be also a local thing, but it's, but the reason it's been so convenient for us is because it's all done in one location. The cars are purchased, drop shipped to these, to this outfitter, and they strip the car, put all our stuff in it, and deliver it on a truck when it looks like this in this photo here. So it's, although it's a little bit of work, getting the cars purchased and going through this process and specking them out each year, once that is done, then it's, it is literally turnkey, and I just wait for them to arrive. Now, there is a few headaches along the way, but-
Yeah, but we, we do it as a turnkey deal. We don't have two different companies putting us a final product out, do we? It's a turnkey for, for our organization, police department.
Well, it's done through a private outfitter, also in the Dallas area, who works with these dealerships on the bid contract, and they, that's where the car gets shipped to. And they're the ones who strip it down, put all of our stuff, because then we still buy computers, cameras, the cage in the back, all the lights, and those are then all installed, I'm sorry, installed in the car at that other location. So for me, it's a one-stop. For them, it's two stops, but that's, that's on them. So when it comes to me, I order them, and I say, aye, this is my first time to do it. But we collectively order them- So, when it comes to me, I order them, and I say, I, this is my first time to do it, but we collectively order them, and then they'll, they'll arrive. And the last batch we ordered, December of 2020, just arrived two weeks ago. So, we're already about a 10-month, 12-month, 11-month process.
We only have to negotiate one price one time.
And we don't even negotiate it, it's there, it's on the state contract, there is no negotiating, so it is, it is what it is, and so that's, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Fisher?
And so, if we were to buy, if we were to buy from a local dealership, then we would have to, we, you guys, would have to find an outfitter and take on the responsibility of the, of the second step, is that right?
Miss, can we let Mr. Slaton?
Sure. These outfitters are available to any dealership.
Okay.
We can order them directly from the factory, have them drop ship through these outfitters and others around the country. There's one in Beaumont, there's a couple up in Dallas, there's one down in Houston. So, we order the vehicle, it gets shipped through to these companies, they outfit them, put them back on up. When, when the factory drops them off, they pick them up and they deliver them to the dealership for the final place.
Right.
Everything that can be done on one of these, except for the fact that it's a Tahoe, we, we can.
You can't do that?
No, we can't do that. Can't put lipstick on a pig. But on, on the Fords and the other things that we sell, we can certainly have this type of stuff done too. That's one of the reasons why Tipton Ford and, and no other dealership in this area has done it. We actually have hired a person who is specifically fleet. He goes to these companies, he does tours, he learns what they do, so that he can speak intelligently and help you pick out the things that you need to actually save you time to not have to go and do all this yourself, and we do, we do this ourselves, so, y'all know Ray Mitchum, I'm sorry.
Great, thank you for that information.
So, it can be a one, a one, a turnkey one-stop thing for Nacogdoches Police Department. Great, and then my other, my only other question was, what can we do proactively to get moving on this? Because it seems very much like that's a reasonable request, I'm sorry that it has taken 20 years to get traction. But, and, and that question was already asked and answered, yes.
Can I make one more comment? This, my comments, if I, if I let anybody to believe that nobody in the city or county does business with Tipton Ford, that's not the case. We appreciate the relationships that we've had with the city, and this isn't specifically a, a police department deal. It is a inconsistent deal, sometimes it's for the Bible word, sometimes it's local. And so, what we would just like is, we would just like an, an opportunity firsthand. Some of these big dealerships have pools of vehicles when vehicles are available, they might have hundreds of these things out there that match the state bids. In that case, you should go buy them from them, because you can get them in two weeks. But in, for the most part, I think that the, the purchases are planned, and those purchases can be done for dealers in the entire United States. We all pay the same for a vehicle as anybody else, the only difference that we might pay is destination and delivery, which is the distance that it has to get to us from the factory. So, we all pay the same, and, so we can, we can, we looked at the bid, we could have, we could have been right there on those bids with those. We can't anymore, because one of the government price concessions actually ended on the date that that company actually provided the bid, so we wouldn't actually even be able to match that price anymore. They'll still be able to, because Ford will honor their bid date. But had we been able to see it at the beginning and bid it at that same period of time, we would have been able to be right there without the council having to make a decision to allow us a three or five percent. Matter of fact, we probably, we don't lose bids to our local city if we can help it, so we, we would have been right there, so.
Thank you, thank you again.
That's helpful, and, and the last thing I'll say is that I just, I appreciate you picking up the phone and calling all of them. And, and you're very easy and, and, and nice to talk to, and so, it's not surprising to me that it was, that they were all cooperative and positive conversations, and I appreciate your effort on that.
It's one of the benefits of a small town, it really is, where you can, where you can pick up the phone and do that.
I just want to say thank you to Dan for the, the presentation and answering questions, and also thank you to Mr. Slaton for sort of bringing a little more light to, to something that I, I think does need to be addressed, definitely. It's something that I have sort of questioned myself, and so I look forward to seeing where we can go with some sort of change in policies or ordinance.
Even if we have to deal with Ray Mitchum?
I didn't say that.
Wait, who said that, yeah.
We do appreciate you, both you guys, for, for being here tonight and kind of educating us, that's, that's very helpful, and Dan certainly for your work, thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, let's see, do I have a motion to, on six A, consider purchase of five new police vehicles?
So, move.
Move, Ms. Bellinger, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bolden, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move on to six B, consider a resolution joining the state of Texas and Texas political subdivisions, opioid abatement fund council and settlement allocation term sheet, City Attorney Kirkland.
Good evening. This is a request of the Texas AG for us to join them in their settlement with, against the opioid manufacturers and distributors. You all probably have seen in the newspapers and heard on the news, litigation has begun against them for, primarily for false and misleading statements to purchasers for, about the addictive qualities of various opioid drugs, which has precipitated and led to a lot of folks becoming dependent on opioid drugs, which then, when their prescriptions ran out, became, they sought other sources, which opioid is another way for heroin and those sorts of things. So, it became a epidemic nationally, which, when the AGs of almost all 50 states joined together to sue, they filed the lawsuits under fair trade rules. Once you totaled up all the damages that could be put out on that, you exceeded the market value of most of the drug manufacturers that are involved. If you parcel that out into the distribution networks, you can sort of spread the cost out. So, the likelihood of getting 100% recovery for everybody is, is bad. And as a consequence, settlements have been reached. Our AG has joined a bipartisan group of AGs to settle a significant chunk of damages with three particular entities, of four, I'm sorry. One of them's a manufacturer, and three of them are distributors. The total can be up to one and a half billion dollars to the state of Texas, it's much bigger nationally. The up to depends on how many local jurisdictions the state can get to agree to sign on to the settlement. And by signing on to the settlement, you're agreeing that you're releasing any claims you would have independent of the settlement, which for us is a good thing, because we don't have to go do the lawsuit. We don't have to go do the experts, we don't have to do all of the things that go into a lawsuit. I'm not sure it actually would be cost-effective for us to do it alone. At some point, we would have to band with someone, we did not join any litigation prior to this, so the AG is asking us to join on now, which increases the amount of money that ultimately can come to the state of Texas. Once we sign on, there is a protocol for allocating a portion of that one and a half billion to us. 15% of that one and a half billion will come directly to participating jurisdictions like Nacogdoches. Our percentage is around 250,000. It will not all come on the day we sign it, it will not all come on April 1st of next year, when the first distributions are being made. But distributions will be made over the next 18 years, most of that is going to be, according to the AG, in the first three years. So, that money will come to us, and we can spend it on programs that have a nexus to the opioid epidemic, is the generic way of describing it. So, that could be interdiction, that could be treatment, that could be intervention, or that could be prevention. So, any number of different programs, we can fund that to, and we don't have to make up our minds in order to sign it. We just have to say, yes, we want the money coming to our community, so we can spend it on that type of program. The other benefit to joining the, the other benefit, I mean, free money is free money, right? But the other benefit is it opens up the bigger pot of money. Remember I said 15% comes to the local, 85% is being held by the state and administered in a trust fund. So, it opens up that fund to our local agencies that are dealing with opioid issues, drug treatment issues generically, to access that funding. So, it's a double win for us locally. We don't have to spend the money to go get it, it comes to us, and we get to spend it on the programming as we, we, we develop later. So, that's the, the program, that's the request, my recommendation is that we, we join the, the program, sign on to the settlement. The AG's office has asked for a resolution, which has been provided to you all in the, the package to sign that. There's some program documents that's also included, and if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, I, I think I would take public comment at this point, is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay. Counsel, Mr. Anderson?
No, you have answered my question, that was whether or not there were stipulations that the, the funds be used specifically for related intervention and dependency mitigation efforts.
So, the legal ties on the fund is distinct and different than typical government monies, because it's all governed by the settlement documents, which are going to be held in trust. So, the particular strings on that are there, but I can tell you, they don't, from their standpoint, paying the money and getting the release is what they want. So, the typical concerns about being true to the program documents will be la, less stringent here.
Yeah.
And the AG's office has been pretty direct in saying, if there's a nexus that you can describe to the opioid epidemic, you'll be okay to spend the money. I take them at their word on that, Controller's Office is going to be administering the money, so I'm sure there will be more strings attached to it.
They theoretically would be potentially auditing use of the funds at some point.
They could be, but there's really no mechanism for them to take it back.
Okay.
I'm not putting it past the Comptroller to figure out a way to take it back, but.
That's a separate issue, though.
Yes.
I, I don't really see a downside, I just have one question further down the line, who would decide on how the money is spent? Would it be something that gets brought to city council, would it be a decision by city staff? I mean, you know, assuming that the nexus is proven.
The money is yours, so you would be the one to spend it, no, yours collectively. So, you would be the one to spend it, you could direct staff to come up with a program, you could, we, we can bring you recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
You could ask us to make a call for proposals. Any number of ways to approach that, we will come up with a recommendation for you, and then you can tell us if you like it or don't.
Great.
So, I, this is always my question, when you offer to class action, it's, it's worth giving up your rights to get into that class, you think? I think that's what.
Sounds like, that's what he's saying.
It's my recommendation that it is, yes.
Bolden?
I guess I just have one comment, you know, like funding that goes to the GLO, from the GLO to different entities. Now, if, if you don't use that money towards the goal that they have established for you, they'll come back and take it back. And if we don't establish a program to, to use all that fund, but, and they also have a timeframe set. If you don't do in three years, then we'll come back and take those funds away.
So, this is a different tranche of money coming to us, it's not tax money, it's not governed by federal or even state policy. It's governed by a settlement document, and the settlement document directs you to spend the money towards programming that meets the nexus. So, yes, I, I, I understand that, and then my, my, my radar went up, was okay, free money, but it's never free. So, let me go find out what the strings are, and the strings are the nexus. There's no timeline that's involved in this, they're not even giving us a clear timeline as to when to expect it. So, whatever we do has to be scalable and adaptable.
And is this both the city and the county?
So, the county did join a separate lawsuit, and they are pursuing a different course. They may ultimately come to the same point as we are, but they have their own approach. Collectively, between the two of us, if they were to join this, we would get around 400,000 to the county.
And put the same 250 for the city?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's allocated based on the number of prescriptions that were written for the area, the treatment, people that have entered treatment for that, the number of ODs, the number of emergency room admissions. There's the, an algorithm of the hard data that shows how much of an issue we have. Oh, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Bellinger?
I have nothing to add.
All right, thank you, thank you, sir. Counsel, do I have a motion to accept six B?
So, moved.
Move, Mr. Anderson, I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Fisher, any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries, we'll move to number seven, and I think there was a question as to whether or not we would, we would need that, do?
That was there in case you asked a question that required me to say we need to go to closed session, and you did not, so.
So, if that's okay, Counsel will pass on seven A, is that okay? All right, and then next is eight, and I can do that on my own, we're adjourned.